All right. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to round two of the Chamber of Commerce's Chamber Collaboratives Candidate Forums. My name is Benjamin Camp. I'm the Chief Collaborator and President here at the Chamber Collaborative of Portsmouth. We thank you for joining us this morning for our second forum. This morning, we have with us Josh Denton, Vince Lombardi, Brian Maddow, Counselor Deglin McKeckern, Elizabeth Moreau, Andrew Simonas, and Counselor John Tabor. The, there's an old saying that all politics is local, and I think that's incredibly true for city council elections. The decisions made by the next council will have dramatic impacts on our community for years and years to come, generations to come. A lot of great important decisions. This session is being recorded. Only, only our candidates and myself will be able to unmute today. You can chat with me and the other co-hosts, which are the candidates, if you need to during the session, but we just ask that you remain respectful throughout the time. This is being recorded. It will be posted at noon today on our Facebook page and our YouTube channel, so you can re-watch it if you wish there. Just a few more details. We'll be keeping time limits for everyone, and General will be taking care of that. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer all the questions this morning, so we will have plenty of time. And if we do have time at the end, I'll ask for some questions from the audience, and we can get to that. I have four topics that I want to discuss today. Those are important issues facing our business community. The Chamber Collaborative is a business organization, so we'll be focusing on business-related issues today, and some of those cross over into general Portsmouth challenges as well. So we will start with opening remarks. All the orders today have been selected at random, thanks to a website that does that. We knew that's a thing, but it is. So we use that to randomly draw names out of a hat electronically to, to, to start. So without further ado, we'll start with opening statements. We're giving our candidates 90 seconds for their opening statements, and we are going to start today with Vince Lombardi.
Well, good morning. People ask me why I'm running for city council, and what I have found is that all my life, I was told to be a citizen of a community. You should participate in the community. So I've done that. I did that in high school. I did that in college. I did that in Boston, where I spent a lot of time after college, and I've done it in Portsmouth. I am, I've been on and chaired a number of boards, including the Historic District Commission. I have always thought that, I've lived by, actually, the idea of, of think global and act local. This phrase created by Patrick Geddes, a Scottish urban planner in 1920. And so I have always thought that it is important to solve major problems locally. So I tend to think of things like climate change, the lack of civility throughout the world, things like that. And I see it filtering down to our, our local government, our local newspaper. So I'm running on a platform of respect, civility, and confidence to bring that to the city council. And I guess my time is up.
Yes, thank you, Vince. We did have Counselor Huda and Counselor Kennedy join us. If you can start your videos, that you can jump in here, we'll, we'll let you go at the end of these opening statements, but you should be able to do that by starting the video in the lower-left corner. I gave you permission to do that. There we go. We got one. All right. So we'll go over next to Counselor Deglin McKeckern. 90 seconds.
Thank you, Ben, Jen, the chamber, all my fellow candidates, and everyone who signed up to listen. It's your participation that makes Portsmouth what it is, and it's a great place to call home. I've served on the city council for the last two years, and when I'm not in a council meeting, I'm a father to two young girls, a husband to an amazing wife, and a senior director at a technology company. I live across the street from the house that my grandfather built. In my first term, I co-created the Citizens' Response Task Force to help our community and small businesses navigate COVID, supported the first increase to our senior tax credit in a decade, advocated for affordable housing to maintain income diversity, supported the education budget to ensure our children thrive, led initiatives to increase access to recreation for all ages, and prioritized transparent communication. If I'm lucky enough to be re-elected, I will continue to advocate for accountability, civility, and transparency, fight for an affordable Portsmouth, support our children's education, protect our natural resources, and improve city services through technology, and also tirelessly work to increase citizen engagement. I am here to serve Portsmouth because I love Portsmouth. I'm going to work my butt off to make sure it's a place both this generation and the next one are proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKeckern. We'll go next to Elizabeth Moreau.
Good morning, and thank everyone for joining us this morning. I am not only a Portsmouth resident, but I'm a Portsmouth business owner. I am an attorney, and I have volunteered with the city for about the last nine years. I've held several different roles in my volunteer jobs with the city, and I think that we have some really, it's a really important time for the city. We have some really big issues facing us, and we're going to need some strategic looking at the future and really plotting out how we can handle climate change and the lack of affordable housing are two of the top issues that I think the city needs to deal with. And affordable housing, it gets tied into the lack of transportation system. If we have a more robust transportation system, and if we have more affordable housing, then we wouldn't have many issues with our workforce, which becomes a major problem for the business community. That's what I hear on a daily basis, talking to other business owners that I am surrounded by every day. I think that I have, through my work in volunteer experience, a lot of ability to negotiate and to be able to do a consensus kind of building scenario. I think that we need more respect and civility, has been said more than once, and I fully agree that we need to look to the experts to help us plan policy and to actually move us into the future. I think that would be very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We'll go next to Andrew Simonas.
Good morning, all. My name is Andrew Simonas. I'm a Portsmouth native, Portsmouth High School graduate, when, and then I went off to Endicott College, and then later on, went to get a Masters of Real Estate Development and Urban Design. I currently own and operate alongside my dad, a small business and a small real estate company on Bow Street, where we've operated for 20-plus years. Portsmouth is important to me, not only because it's a very hyper-local and active business community, but as we see every day, although you may not be involved in one industry, it's very easy to have residual effects and impacts on everyone in our business community. So what I see as a city councillor is an opportunity to understand the priorities and concerns of small business owners and bring those to light, and not only incubating a great business commerce and atmosphere, but also understanding how we can progress that, whether it's a small business or some of the businesses out in peace. I think we have great opportunities that we need to understand how to emphasize those on a very hyper-local level.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that. We'll go to Counselor John Tabor next.
Thanks, Ben. This feels like coming home. As many of you know, I ran Seacoast Media Group for 20 years, and that was a business that depended on local business. We were active Chamber members. First, I wanted to say I'm an independent on the council to some extent, but I work with all my fellow counselors, from Esther Kennedy on Clipper Strong and Bikeland Studies to my McIntyre Subcommittee colleagues, for whom I've gained enormous respect in more than 60 meetings, to Cliff Lazenby on Clean Energy. And I think that's what the voters send us to City Hall to do, to be problem solvers and collaborate. I'd like to serve a second term to make the city better in a couple of ways. I think we can get McIntyre across the finish line. My contributions to that have been working on the survey and Portsmouth's process to get broad and deep public input, and I do think the current design we have is one that residents want and is better. Second, when I go door-to-door, and I've been in five or six of the neighborhoods so far, a lot of people are saying they're concerned the city's going to be overdeveloped with condos and hotels. So I don't think we want to go back to Portsmouth of the 1980s. We can't. And we've got a really vibrant city that combines the arts and restaurants and our history. But I do think we need to review our zoning when used to be sure that we balance development with community care. And last, I'm chairing a committee looking at aggregating our electricity demand as a city, and going into the energy markets to buy greener and potentially cheaper electricity. You know, sea level rise is very real for us. We're going to spend $3 million to raise Prescott Park by seven feet. But what are we doing about the underlying issue of climate change? So I want to have a way that our residents have the chance and the choice to make a difference on our carbon
Thank you, Counselor Tabor. We'll go to Byron Maddow next.
Appreciate it, Ben. Thanks for having me. I think this is a great forum. You know, the mission of the chamber is so critical, because the business community not only brings vibrancy to the city, but it also helps to mitigate the overall tax burden. And that's something certainly I've been hearing a lot about knocking on doors in the city. By trade, I'm a software engineer, but I'm also an amateur guitar noodler, and I make a great Sunday gravy. I have, I have three children, one at Don Darrow, one at the middle school, and one in diapers. My main focus as a policymaker will be to move towards sustainability, and that's across several policy areas. Sustainability with regards to climate change, sustainability with regards to economic practices, implications for schools and other critical city services, and sustainability with regards to housing and in social capital. And I am passionate that these issues in many ways are best addressed at the local level. It is at the local level where we set the framework from which the patterns and behaviors grow. It's important to be ever-critical of the patterns and frameworks we've been living with and understand how we can better them. And we need to set specific success metrics around our policies, i.e. how do we know if a law or policy is achieving the desired result? And I would love the opportunity to work with the city manager to identify the success metrics as a city we can measure, and then find the systems that allow early feedback. I do not think I or anyone else, for that matter, has all the answers, but I think through a rigorous, science-based approach, we can achieve the goals of the city and lead into the 21st century.
Thank you. Made it all the way through yesterday without forgetting to unmute. I already screwed it up. We're going to go to Counsel, Josh Denton, please.
Morning, everyone. I'm a proven leader who is running to restore competency in the city council as a policy board, and respect for our volunteer boards, our staff, and most importantly, our residents. I fell in love with Portsmouth as a UNH undergrad, thought about the city often while I was in the Army, and moved here upon returning from Iraq in 2007. I've always believed in public service, whether it be as a city councillor from 2016 to 2020, president of the 501(c)(3) pop-up New Hampshire the previous summer during the height of the pandemic, and now as the commander of BFW Post 168. Just like I did all my previous campaigns, I've been bicycling door-to-door every weekend from Labor Day to Election Day to learn what's important to you. To date, I've hit over 2,000 doors. I'm proud of all my previous successful initiatives, from the various veterans' tax credits to what the previous council accomplished on affordable housing, to climate change, which is near and dear to my heart, and if re-elected, I will continue in all of those fronts. A bit about me, I'm an attorney that does labor and employee relations at the shipyard, meaning I'm a lead negotiator with the unions. I just finished negotiating the $1.7 billion dry dock expansion, and I also provide advice to management over issues. Most recently, the hot-on issue being implementing President Biden's vaccination executive order. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Appreciate that. And we'll go to Counselor Patrick Huda next.
Good morning, everybody. I'm running for council again, because change comes slowly, and I think there's still a lot to do. I believe that the final responsibility for sound financial policies and the management of tax dollars lies with the governing body. As such, I'm always mindful that councillors, as councillors, we are accountable to the residents who elected us. I will continue to ask the questions that promote financial transparency in regards to the annual budget, bonding and capital improvements, and property taxes, and all projects that affect taxpayers of Portsmouth. I am passionate about preserving the character and charm of Portsmouth, especially our downtown historic district and the waterfront. Under the current zoning, Portsmouth's historic character is being boxed in by higher and higher projects, using incentives to increase building height. The results can be seen in our North End and our West End. I do not believe at this time, the incentives that, we need incentives to attract the developers, and it's time for a change to simplify our zoning districts and to eliminate some of the incentives that don't seem to be working. I'm committed to staying the course on the McIntyre, which I believe will change the heart of our historic district forever. And I am still committed to full-time to the citizens of Portsmouth to use my financial background to attain a sustainable budget and tax rate, not to force our residents and our taxpayers out of their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. And certainly, not to be least, but our last opening statement will come from Counselor Esther Kennedy.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for everyone that's joined us and gotten up in this bright and early day of 8 o'clock. I am coming from you from my small business. I chose to do that because I think moving forward, our community, who is very dependent on small businesses, as Mr. Simonas also says, and I know some of you have small businesses, we need to make sure we take care of them after this pandemic. As a councillor, I have made sure I've taken care of our residents. You asked me to look at skateboard parks for our younger generation, and we've worked diligently on getting one in to the stomp town. You've asked me to look at bike lanes, and I have. And as Mr. Tabor says, I've worked with him on biking and bike paths. You've asked me to keep your budget low and work on budgets, and we have. Last, this past budget, we came in and we brought it down 33% less than what the city manager originally had proposed, without cutting any positions in our school unless the school board chose. You've asked us to do a lot of things on council, and I've completed them. I have listened to you as citizens, and I will continue. I do think we have a little bit more to do, so I'm asking for another two years. Thank you.
Thank you. So this will start the first of four questions that I have asked, or will be asking. We're going to start on a topic that's been mentioned a few times in the opening statements with workforce. Across all sectors of our economy, our local companies are struggling to find the workforce they need at all levels. Filling the vacant positions has been harder than ever. How do you see the city, and more, most importantly, the city council, being able to support our local businesses to obtain the workforce that they need? Again, this is a new random order. We'll start with Counselor Deglin McKeckern.
Thank you, Ben. First, the workforce crisis that is affecting Portsmouth, New Hampshire, the United States, has a lot of factors. I'd say remote work is going to make it harder, meaning that you're competing for wages outside of Portsmouth's downtown. Something that's pretty close to home for us, childcare is unpredictable, and many times might not make sense to re-enter the workforce. But when we speak specifically of what can the council do to, to help in this process, it comes down to housing. Workforce housing is a term that is, by definition, not nearly enough from a affordable standpoint, but it's something we can do a lot more of. When it comes specifically to zoning, one change that I would like to see is removing the open space component, so that we force folks that are building to choose to build affordable housing, and we need to work with the PHA, not against them, in order to greenlight the projects.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Counselor Patrick Huda.
I think, I think that the, the situation has changed substantially since the start of COVID, and I think a lot of the, a lot of the changes that were made on the federal level affected us greatly. I think one of the things that we can do is still look at affordable housing and look at the way our zoning is, I guess, creating a, should be creating a method. And I just go back and think about how many units of affordable housing that we could have had if we, if we had put that in in the first place as one of our only incentives. Moving forward, I think there's, there's a lot of things we could do. I would look towards our, our new pending acquisition of the community campus that probably could really help us out. We have 34 acres down there. We're looking for a lot of input on that, and I think that would be a great possibility for us there.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Up next, Andrew Simonas.
Yeah, so the way that I perceive this question, there are a couple of different avenues you could answer it, whether it's the workforce, housing, or the workforce itself, and having a good employee base. I think what keeps our small businesses' doors open is, in fact, employees. And to get and retain employees, there has to be an understanding of what they're prioritizing. So as Deglin alluded to, whether it's childcare, whether it's housing or transit options, I think Portsmouth has to, has to look at that in a full-compass sort of approach. And then the housing portion will, will come. And with community campus, we have a great opportunity. We certainly have to be diligent and substantially research on that to implement exactly what Portsmouth needs versus what Portsmouth is demanding. I think there is a disparity between those two, and to understand that disparity, we have to go to the citizens who will be living there, as well as the people that will be funding it. And at the end of the day, we'll have a very clear understanding of what we have to implement.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. Counselor Esther Kennedy.
The workforce housing shortage has really hit me hard in two ways. One, I'm a public school administrator, and I do hiring, and we have had a hard time finding qualified candidates. And second, in my own personal business at Esters Marina, this was the first year that I had to shut down because we could not have enough employees to keep going. So I think it really comes down to now. Workforce housing, we definitely need to look at, but that's down the line. It's going to take a couple of years. What we need to look at is ways of transporting people. One of the things that I find that transportation is hard, it's hard to find parking downtown if you're working in local businesses. What can the city council do to change that so we can support our employees today? How do we get the wages up? How do we get people to go into our businesses so we can, people can up the wages for our employees? Those are some of the things we need to do today. Workforce housing, definitely, but what are we going to do today as a council? Thank you.
Thank you. Go to Elizabeth Moreau.
Good morning. The workforce is a problem, and it is uniquely tied to affordable housing and having a place where people can live. There's been a lot due to COVID of people coming to this area because they can work remotely. I think we need to look at this, because this is not just a city or a state issue, it's a bigger issue, that we need to look more regionally. As a commissioner with the Rocking and Planning Commission, we are actually starting to have conversations around how we can work cross-borders with our neighboring towns and within our region to really help to support the workforce and to help support affordable housing, so that we can find solutions that we can use for everyone. And I think that will be one of the key steps. We also need to look at our zoning. We've changed our zoning to try to promote it, even it's now time to evaluate that and see if we can actually add additional zoning. And then we also need to look at what we can do with municipal properties, along with Portsmouth Housing Authority, I think would be key. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Denton.
So I've actually lived the workforce housing crisis, having waited tables while working on my Masters of Public Administration, waiting tables while studying to pass the bar exam, and I was the only renter on the council who didn't also own property for years. Our housing market negatively impacts seniors relying on fixed incomes, aspiring first-time homeowners, and half our population that rent. Everyone's talked about how zoning must be redone, changing incentives. I support that. Likewise, there was a good opinion piece, which I suggest everybody read in the Herald this morning, by David Cho, has some good ideas in it. Likewise, we must continue to encourage the Portsmouth Housing Authority to build more projects like the one on Court Street, and I'm proud to have voted on my last term on the council to waive $140,000 to $160,000 in their fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Byron Maddow.
Appreciate it. Yeah, so I think the, you know, the reverberations of COVID are continuing around the globe, and we all have to reckon with these larger market forces, you know, people in the workforce, and maybe, maybe most acutely in the service industry, you know, they're reevaluating whether the grind of that type of work is worth what's coming back on the other side. I think that's happening, you know, even without the heavy pressure of the need to cough up more than 50% of their income just to live. Now, those things together are a perfect storm for the kind of workforce issues that we're seeing. And I think it ties back into the idea of sustainability of social capital. Right now, the city of Portsmouth is quickly growing further out of reach for most people, and I would say housing is probably the biggest thing that the city can focus on mitigating this issue. You know, workforce, affordable housing, zoning around ADUs and multifamily houses, I think all of these can help mitigate this issue. None of them are a silver bullet, though. And the last thing on transportation, I only want to say this quickly is, I don't, I wouldn't want to create a system where we force workers to live in another community and commute hours of their day to serve hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tabor.
Thanks, Ben. Byron, I think you really described what it's like for our workforce, that much of their income spent on housing and transportation. Let's break it into two. First, workforce in the region. We do draw people who live in lower-cost areas. 2003, Peter Hamlin and I, when we were on the chamber together, talked to Judge Gregg about, and he got an earmark to expand the Little Bay Bridges. So transportation to Portsmouth is easy. Getting a worker into Portsmouth affordably is hard. So we may want to look at satellite parking fees and some kind of transportation. An easy way to get from foundry in the winter. In terms of affordable housing, there are so many things we have to do.
Thank you, Counselor Tabor. And last, for this topic, will be Vince Lombardi.
Thank you. Yes, I, I agree with a lot of what other people said. Workforce housing is a very critical issue. I also think regional transportation is a factor in bringing workforce to the city. My, my own children can't afford to live in Portsmouth, and I, I see that small businesses are suffering. I see the restaurant industry in Portsmouth, which is so attractive, is suffering. I see that the hospitals are having trouble having, being staffed. All this is brought to a peak with COVID, and I think that we need to improve transportation, improve workforce housing, and I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. So many of you mentioned in your remarks on the workforce, all, I think everyone identified housing as being a critical barrier to that. I actually have a chance to meet with David Cho yesterday. I did not know there was an article about it until just now, but I talked with David yesterday about some, some of his thoughts and actions that he would like to see. So my question for you is that, if elected, what specific actions will you take within your first 90 days in office to help? within your first 90 days in office to help make the development of housing for our community's workers more achievable? We'll start with Byron Maddow.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think, yeah, within the first 90 days, like I said before in the opening statement, I think, you know, identifying specific performance goals is the first step. And I think we need to work back from that, right? So what are the specific housing affordability metrics that are going to meet the demand as far as, or meet the problem as far as allowing people to live here and work back from there? So if that means, you know, how many affordable housing units? What's the target on that? Where can we build them? Identify, and then I think from there, you know, like I said before, affordable housing is one of the ways we can do this. But I think there's a more organic way. I think people love Portsmouth. They love the neighborhoods of Portsmouth. They love the downtown. And a lot of that was developed in a traditional growth pattern that has been stifled over decades and decades of overlay zoning. So I think simplifying the zoning to allow more iterative and natural growth pattern would, long-term, you know, the acute thing can be solved. But long-term, I think we need to look at zoning issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Councilor Kennedy.
As we know, this council supported EDUs on individuals' houses. So we have that. How do we, we have to ask our question. How do we incentivize and get people to build? We get corporations to build housing for our workforce housing. And I think we need to have a conversation. I've been famous this last two years for having walks. And maybe we need to have a conversation with those people in our commercial industry and our community, see how we can work together right off the bat to get affordable housing so we can get a workforce to be here in Portsmouth. The other thing I truly believe is it does come down to some zoning. So one of the first things we can do as a council in 90 days is look at our zoning and start looking at our master plan and reflect and see what we need to change to move the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor McKeckern.
Thank you, Ben. We won't have to wait 90 days. I've asked and called for this, and it's been pushed. But meeting with the PHA to identify areas where we can partner with them to build. We can raise money. We found out this year. We can actually raise bonds or revenue bonds to support this type of growth and investment. And we can all promise not to stand in the way of what the Portsmouth Housing Authority is doing as, you know, someone the council have done in the last, in the last two years. But in terms of zoning, and that was the focus of Mr. Cho, we can remove the public space option. Often, those turn out to be private parks. We can actually require for any density to require the 20% affordable housing. We are an inclusionary state when it comes to zoning. So we're tied a little bit by the state that, but there's a lot more that we can and will do.
Thank you. Josh Denton.
Thank you. Credits due to Councilor McKeckern for meeting and pushing for the Portsmouth Housing Authority. I would continue on those efforts to actually build another project like the one on Court Street. As a policy board, I think one of the very first things the city council should do is meet with the actual land use boards, specifically the planning board, to see what they found works and doesn't work. And then have, ask the city manager, because that's the only member of the city staff that works for us, to report back within those 90 days with actual changes to zoning that we could implement based on the experts' feedback.
Thank you, Josh. Go to Andrew Simonis next.
Yeah, I think that each person has had their own opinion, and they're all extremely valid. More so, when we look at our zoning, we have to understand what the parameters are that we're trying to hit. So Byron talked about metrics and key performance indicators. That's obviously extremely important because that answers who we're serving and what they need or where they need to live. And then Deglin spoke to, you know, the zoning, and Esther mentioned it as well. But we have to understand the parameters to, A, get the funding from either the state or the federal level and how we acquire those funds and how we need to distribute them, whether it's with PHA or private developers in a public-private partnership. And then we have to look at the remaining parcels within our city. Where can we find these parcels? And how do we work with our zoning codes? And how do we work with the planning board to then implement that? One of these areas is the Gateway District on Marona Road. We have an incredible master plan for that and a vision plan for that that I think we certainly need to add dimension to and bring to life. And then when we're done with that, one of the most important aspects of this that we never do, I think, as a city, is reflect back and look at the projects that have been completed. And then reflect back and say, was this successful and how do we replicate it?
Thank you, Andrew. Councilor Huda.
Yeah, I will kind of just tag on what Andrew said. That, I think, in the first 90 days, we need to actually go back and review. That was a big thing that I mentioned. And I think that some of the incentives that were offered, were not, were not used enough, I guess you'd say. That's one thing we could do. The next thing we could do is we'd look at what is available at the federal level, at the state level, and collaborate and combine local dollars to do this. Also, community campus is there. We could also look at how that the Portsmouth Housing Authority can help us, I guess, acquire the funds and build this with all the expertise they have in the field. And I guess finally, it's up to the council to get the collaboration going together.
Thank you. Vince.
Yes, I think there are opportunities with ADUs. I think there are opportunities at the community campus. I think that the, the housing is a crucial issue. I think that the small business has suffered from that, lack of affordable housing, workforce housing. I agree that the Portsmouth Housing Authority is a lot of expertise in building and getting funds. So all of those factors need to be addressed. I think that the first things that we could look at are zoning and how to adapt our zoning to make more of this possible.
Great. Thank you. Elizabeth Moreau.
Thank you. I think the first and foremost is there's already in the works to be completed within the next year, a housing assessment for our entire region that is being done through the Rocking and Planning Commission. So that can help actually give us some of the data that we're going to need next year and wish to be able to actually come up with the housing plans. And I think the housing plans need to be multi-layered. It needs to be looking at our municipal properties and looking at our zoning. I was actually part of the group that put together all the initial zoning. And some of it, I'm very disappointed, it's not working. So we can look at that, and we can also look at whether or not the accessory dwelling unit laws that we put into place are actually working or not working. So immediately, we can look at all of those fronts in which to be able to come up with a plan that looks at several different angles and moves us forward towards more housing that will help the affordable housing issues. Thank you.
And finally, Councilor Tabor.
Thanks, Ben. Yes, two things right away. First, Manchester has used their ARPA money, that was COVID relief money. And they provide a gap payment between what a worker can afford and market rent. And this is designed to people who've been impacted by COVID. I would immediately ask the city manager to study that to see if we have an opportunity to do a gap program for renters in our city. And second, I think we meet with the PHA and we learn where we could use city land to help them build another Court Street-type project. PHA uses private capital to build affordable housing and combine that with public land.
Thank you, Councilor. Let's see, so that concludes that question. We're going to stick on this development theme a little bit here. So my question for you is that it's no secret that Portsmouth continues to see lots of interest from developers. These developments are changing the landscape of our community. How can we move forward with an approach that doesn't stifle development, provides a fair and equitable process for developers looking to invest in our community, but keeps Portsmouth's character that we all know and love? Josh Denton, we'll start with you.
Gladly. So this goes back to how the city council is a policy board first and foremost. And when it comes to reigning in development, which I know a lot of people talk about this time and talk about last time, policies set by passing ordinances. I spoke about climate change. When I was on the council, I was a strong advocate for climate change. One of the ordinances which I pushed to make sure it went forward was enacting the floodplain district zoning ordinance before that North Mill Pond, I'm pointing over my shoulder, development was submitted. So we need to actually work on changing ordinances. We can't just go ahead and try to make staff do what we want them to do. Likewise, with the city boards, because due to the number of staff which have left and institutional drain on our city, right now, our boards are forced to not have the staff that they need to rely on. And these larger projects are essentially overrunning them. And it's been counterproductive, the approach that's been taken. And we need to return to being a policy board to make sure that we actually pass the zoning that we want to see.
Thank you, Josh. Councilor Kennedy.
Well, I think that one of the things that we have started to do, and we're going to have to continue to do, is really look at not only our zoning, but our master plan. And what do we need? It's pretty clear when you go door to door and when you talk to people, this election, people are feeling that the growth has not been productive for their lives. And they would like us to keep the traditions of Portsmouth. So when you go, you hear about the history, the seaports, the little shops, the local businesses. So I think it's going to be policy, as Joshua has said. But I also think we need to look at our master plan and make sure we're following it. And if it doesn't meet our needs, then we need to have another Portsmouth listens, as Mr. Tabor puts forward, to maybe look at that plan and see how we can tweak it to meet the next generation or what we want for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vince.
Yes, I, I see, I, I see a new development that has been built. They tore down all the trees and they built a very large condo community. I don't see why that cannot have, be required to have solar throughout to help mitigate some of the climate change issues. I think we have to look at climate change and how we develop, for one thing. And we do, we have to do that through the zoning ordinance. I agree that the, the, the council is a policy organization. The city staff runs the city. And we can encourage the manager to move forward with policies that we create that will encourage development that is a lot smarter on many levels.
Thank you, Vince. Councilor Tabor.
Yes. I think we have to work with our new planning director, and say, how can we allow development, but break up some of the mass and density? So we don't have five stories right to the sidewalk. In the 1890s, one of our biggest developers was Frank Jones, and he built the Rocking Home Hotel. It's five stories high, but it's set back. So I think that's the kind of thing we can do near term. Long term, second year of our term, we'll start a new master plan. And I would be a strong advocate for providing everybody in the city in study circles, small groups, facilitated.
Thank you, Councilor Tabor. Andrew Simonis.
Honestly, I've agreed with everything everyone has said. And I think Esther Kennedy put it one of the better ways. We have a lot of tradition in Portsmouth, and oftentimes, people come here and say, oh, it's so unique and it's so historic. And that's absolutely true. But the same opportunity exists where we can draw influence from other small New England towns or Charleston, South Carolina, or places that have recently seen growth. We can implement really a lot of new ways to identify and then execute on our planning ordinances. One way that we can do that is upon election, whether it's nine new people, a mixture of nine incumbents, or excuse me, a mixture of some incumbents and some fresh faces. What we should do is sit together in a very collaborative sense, almost like a charrette, roundtable discussion, to set a framework for what we want to see done. And I think, as Byron has alluded to and Deglin has mentioned, it's the opportunity to really set the mission statement and set a mission where we have metrics and opportunities to say, here's where we want our identity to be. Here's how we get there, and here's how we make sure that we execute in our held account before that. Setting this framework at the onset of our two-year term will help then, whether it's another few years or really just what the future holds. And that framework is not to be set in an ordinance capacity yet, but it could turn into an ordinance, and it could be implemented in a long-term sense.
Thank you, Andrew. Councilor McKeckern.
Thank you, Ben. Councilor Tabor said that, and I agree with him, that development is the biggest issue. This here is a flyer, states neighborhoods, spirit of the community must be maintained. Growth. Portsmouth is understaged by developers, housing and spending. This is a flyer from 1985. You know, I just wanted to point that out, that these are issues that we will always face as a city. We are next to the ocean. We will always face these issues. And our goal as a council is to face them with diligence and see how we can grow together and not apart. You know, my father would always remind me how much Portsmouth has changed, and we speak a lot about character. The thing that I worry about more than a building and the character of that building is the character of a community. How do we embrace one another? How do we come together? How do we make it so it's a place that our children, if they choose to, can stay in Portsmouth and contribute in that way? So I love the character question. I just think it's about our people and not as much about our buildings.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Huda.
Yeah, I, I would agree with just about everybody. But I guess my priorities would be to go back and see and evaluate. We have done a master plan. What has worked with that? And what do we like? What don't we like? What are the, what are the people telling us? What are the businesses telling us? As far as the zoning, same thing. What is everybody telling us? When we're out campaigning, people are looking at how the precious part of Portsmouth is getting surrounded by higher and higher buildings. They're saying, this is not why I came here. We could get this in Boston. How can we, how can we change that? How can we redo the zoning to keep what we have, to make it more energy efficient, to address the climate change issues in all of the areas that we're doing now? How can we, as a council, move this forward and evaluate what we've done good and what we need to change?
Thank you. And Byron will be next.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, we're talking about the North End. The story begins with an attempt to remove, or an actual removal, what was thought of as polite during urban renewal, you know, ethnic neighborhoods, multifamily, multi-generational homes, which is exactly the type of traditional development patterns that we have zoned ourselves out of. One of my favorite books about, about that time, about urban planning, is The Death and Life of Great American Cities by Jane Jacobs. And she says, there is no logic that can be superimposed on the city. People make it, and it is to them that we must fit our plans. And I think the result of the hubris that we could design how people ought to use the space was these, is these massive lots, which essentially destroyed the equity of the land. And here we are, you know, a generation later, seeing, you know, what obviously is an unpopular development pattern. And I think that's a result of, you know, constricting. And I think that's a result of, you know, constricting growth in an organic way and forcing it into a very specific part of the city. So I'd love to see ways to mitigate that pattern. Thanks.
Thank you, Byron. And last on this topic will be Elizabeth Moreau.
Thank you, Ben. I think we do have to look as a policy board, as a city council, at the policies across the city. And the zoning and the master plan are two of those that direct our city staff. So if we go and we listen to what the residents are saying and what the businesses are saying, I think that we can use all of that information to craft, going forward, the right zoning to be able to, as Byron put it, grow organically, right? There is a lot of restrictions and a lot to go through to even look at our zoning, which is what makes a lot of other places very expensive. And if we could streamline some of the processes and some of the zoning aspects, I think that we could make it better. And it would improve the pattern that is going on. But I think it would allow, as Deglin said, to get all the people on the same page. I think we have to learn to work to find compromise and to work together so that we can all move the entire city forward for both the residents and the business owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our last topic for today. Recently, outgoing City Councilor Cliff Lasenby authored a letter to the editor in which he highlighted several areas, including Indigenous Peoples' Day, racial justice improvements, and action on climate change as areas that this council has done a great job with. In that same letter, he charged that this council has, and I quote, "an environment of distrust for qualified expertise and data and for increased hostility for open and due process." So today's forum is about moving forward. So my question for each of you is how will you, as a council member, work to ensure that experts from the city staff and community are heard and respected and that public input is engaged in a new way in the next two years? We'll start with Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you, Ben. I believe that we have started moving that way. I've asked for having walks. We need to get the citizens involved. I have never found it a problem to ask questions and do research. And sometimes that might not be what the city management has found out. When I do research with the state and federal organizations, I feel that I could contribute and bring things back to the city. We, as a council, moving forward, will have to work together. There's no doubt about that. And we have this time. I've worked with Counselor Tabor. I've worked with Counselor McKeckern. I've worked with Counselor Huda. But it's okay, your question. It's okay to have our citizens come to us with ideas and thoughts. And that might change the course of the way our city moves as we listen to people. I want to thank everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kennedy. Andrew Simonis.
Yeah, I love this question for this audience because it's a business forum. And business, you hire people that complement your skill set. You hire people that will disagree with you. You hire people that may take a different avenue to arrive at the same decision. But in that, you find out, okay, here's where I can improve myself personally. Here's where I can be a better teammate, a better colleague, or a better city counselor. These are all such personality traits where we have the opportunity. We have the people that represent Portsmouth. And that's really why I'm running, because I think when you look at a city council, I think it should reflect the entire spectrum of the demographic here in Portsmouth. I think it should represent an entire spectrum of people that make up what our city does and how our city is identified. With that, you create a better environment. You create a more conducive environment to reaching better and more substantial decisions. That's how we get stuff done, is by creating this really, really strong and supportive, but healthy environment where disagreement is encouraged and agreement is emphasized.
Thank you, Andrew. Josh Denton.
So I originally had not planned on running again for city council. And the reasons why I stated initially why I am running is to restore competency as a policy board and respect to city staff, our boards, and most importantly, the residents. And when I talk about respect for our city staff, that is recognizing that our staff only works for the city manager. It's perfectly fine to ask them questions during city council meetings, but any other time, you have to go through the city manager because she's the only person who works for you. With that said, when it comes to leadership, my central leadership style has been the same since I was in the Army, which is give credit when credit's due to everyone below you and then fall on the sword when someone below you messes up. And I think that's something which the city council could use going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Elizabeth Moreau.
Thank you, Ben. I think that we really do, as Josh has just said so eloquently, we need to restore some respect to our city staff. I think that in many cases, they have been not well-treated in the last couple of years. And in those instances, I think that we have to totally understand that the city staff only does what the city council directs them to do. And we direct them to do that by the policies that we enact. So we really need to enact the policies and give the city manager the framework of what we want to see so that then she can direct the city staff to move in that direction. And I think that as a counselor, we can work together to make that happen. And by listening, and we might, will most likely get great ideas from residents and from business owners, all alike. And I think that we can install those into our policymaking and direct the city staff how to move us forward to make everyone cohesive and happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Counselor Tabor.
It's really important that city councils understand the city manager form of government. The city manager is the chief administrator's chief executive. And the staff works with her. The city council is like a board of directors, representing the residents and setting policy. There's non-inference questions. We need to talk to the city attorney, the city manager, and the planning board. And we can't talk directly to any other state. We need to observe that. So we need to work with the city manager. Policy board. And then non-inference. Very capable city manager. I want to support her in that way.
Thank you, John. Counselor Huda.
Yeah, I think it was kind of clearly stated when I said, this is a new council. And I think there's, change comes slowly and there's a lot to do. And in this term, we've had a lot of what I would call rookies coming in. We've been kind of handed COVID to deal with on top of all our other duties. And there's been a lot of pressure on all of us. From my perspective, I have learned a lot. I have researched a lot. I have come in with a financial background and had to learn about nitrogen levels and pumps and everything else. And I have spent a lot of time doing research. And I ask a lot of questions because if I go and do my research and it tells me something different, then I need to understand what I'm doing to do the best job for the people. And I will continue to ask questions. And if that's considered off, then so be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Huda. Vince Lombardo.
Thank you. Yes, you know, as Chair of the Historic District Commission, I spend a good amount of time with the city staff. I learned that the city staff is very professional. They're knowledgeable and I have deep respect for them. The council is a governing body. The staff is a management body. The council is two years. The staff is ongoing forever. And I think that to recognize the separate roles of the governing body and the management body is very important. I think that we should work together as a council to create the direction, but that the city manager has the authority to run the city. And I respect that.
Thank you, Vince. Counselor McKeckern, and then our last word from Byron.
Thank you, Ben, and thank you, Jen, and everybody for showing up this morning. You know, it's fine to ask questions. I love asking questions. I think the best thing that you can be in the council is curious. But those questions have to come from a place of trust. We have a great city manager who does a lot of work on behalf of all of us. And it's important because all of the issues that we need to face in Portsmouth aren't behind us. They're ahead of us. COVID has drastically changed how people work and respond to work. It is going to be a tsunami of change that's coming, not just to Portsmouth, but around the country. We need, as a policymaking body, be thinking and engaging with the public about the future and to trust that the great city staff that we hired is going to implement what we have already decided on and not go and try to micromanage all of that. That's not the job of the council.
Thank you, Counselor. And Byron.
I appreciate it. Yeah, I think any position of leadership, any position of management oversight, I think really is about service. Are you serving the community? Are you serving that which you are managing, that which you have oversight of? And I think it's telling the attrition we have seen at the city level that the current council's posture towards city staff has not been one of service towards them. I think we are seeing that in many ways. So I don't, you know, all relationships are based on trust. I don't think there's trust currently between certain members of the council and the city staff. Those members of the council that are in that position need to identify ways they can build that trust back. Or we need to replace them with people who can establish new relationships with city management. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is it. Few minutes over, but I appreciate everyone's time this morning, particularly to these nine candidates who took time out of their day to join us and shared some great ideas and thoughts about where we can go. November 2nd is less than three weeks away. We are in the home stretch of this process. I encourage everyone on this Zoom to remain informed on these candidates and read. There's lots of opinion pieces coming out and surveys that everyone is filling out. So inform yourselves, inform your neighbors, and encourage people to get out on November 2nd to vote. I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't mention that we are having a lovely event this evening from four to seven at Cisco Brewery, our Small But Mighty Business Expo, where we have 20 of our local businesses with booths and a networking event out at Cisco Brewery under the tent outside, very COVID-friendly. So come join us from four to seven. It's a free event. There'll be a bar open if you so wish to enjoy that as well. Thanks again to our candidates for joining us today. This will be posted at noon today on YouTube and Facebook. And have a great day. It's a wonderful day in our city. Get out there and enjoy it. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.